No way.
Do we go by this one? We go by the sprint time or that's?
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Yeah, well, my three granddawggers now have it at the house, too. And, um, the one hasn't been on yet. See you later. And that's what you need to do. That's exactly it.
He's at the basketball league on Saturday, so he can't get any.
There you go.
Hello. You okay? We're going by sprint time. Like a few seconds.
Gotta get it rising. It's on time.
My sprint. Okay, I guess we can start. I call to order the special council meeting of the city of Aransas Pass, January 22nd at 6:00 PM. Let's write for the only publication in the press.
Your Lord, we give you thanks this evening for the blessings that we have received from you, my father. I pray, my for that, my father, that you give us, the city council, the guidance to make the right decisions for our citizens. As my father, that you guide us and you know what we need to do, what needs to be done, and the correct road to take that brings a blessing to our town. Have to make it to go bring for, uh, bring it forward, my father, from this devastation that we've had. But with your guidance, we'll be able to make it through in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member shall request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So now we go to Gary.
Uh, the first item is a resolution authorizing Hurricane Harvey temporary housing removal and, um, and placement. This was actually, uh, this is an outgrowth of a discussion that staff had with, uh, excuse me, staff had with the council when, uh, and when a housing issue was brought before you and you approved it. You said, how can we be sure that when the time is up, then the appropriate steps will be taken for termination as far as the housing goes? Uh, and this is meant to address that. And, uh, so again, this is in response to your request. We'll see if it meets with your approval.
I only had one question on this. On the commercial structures, it says a permit by the city of Aransas Pass must be issued in advance of placement and may be subject to additional conditions. Utility connections will require separate permits and approval. How come that's not in the temporary residential structures?
I don't have an answer for you on that. If you would like that in there, we can put that in there.
If I may?
Yes.
I, I am glad that you addressed that because that is something that wasn't, it wasn't necessary as far as addressing the RVs that are outside of the FEMA program that are being temporarily permitted for residential. Because that resolution that expires in three days, uh, remove the requirement for a conditional use permit. But that is part of the process in the normal, whenever, so whenever the FEMA housing ends, that's the process that we go through and that's why it's listed like that, that they have to go through the full permitting and the additional conditions are for the conditional use permit. And so that's something that we do need to address. And just so the council knows, so far they're in Aransas Pass, we have only had for the FEMA program, uh, two RVs that have been permitted and three manufactured home units. Uh, so far, the only ones that are not in an area that is currently zoned for it are the RVs. So right now, the, uh, as far as abatement goes, when the program ends, we're looking at two RVs. They're telling us that there's going to be more before the end of it, so it's good to have this in place anyway. But the, the numbers we're getting are inconsistent as far as how many to anticipate at the end.
Want to also point out, this is not a pride of authorship because it's based on many different cities. It's a conglomerate, a conglomeration of different cities that have tested this, so, uh, it's not something that was created in-house.
Okay. So we better include that in this?
So we will include, can we include the statement about permitting for utilities? Or we don't need to in any way, shape, or form?
I'm hearing we don't, we don't need to.
We don't need to.
Yeah. For RVs, we do not require the utility hookup permits because the intent is, the nature of an RV is the temporary hookup, whereas the manufactured homes have to have the full. So the main requirement we have is for the RVs to have a backflow device, but, um, that's a, not through the permitting process. That's through the inspections after the RV permit is issued. So that's why the language in that's a little, uh, to be permitted for a manufactured home unit, you have to get the manufactured home permit, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical if there's going to be an HVAC unit. For an RV, it is just an RV permit. But the normal procedure for Aransas Pass is it's a conditional use permit that goes through planning and zoning and city council. That way, if additional requirements are desired, that they can be required at that point.
Okay, I understand that. Okay.
Favor of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion we approve resolution number 2018-846.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor and council, next item is something that was very briefly discussed that in earlier council meeting, and that is, um, in June, we have a, uh, a free complete revamping of the webpage. And normally, they're many thousands of dollars, but, uh, you were very wise several years ago in shortening that period when that can be done. I think it's a three-year period. So we're going to start looking immediately at, uh, our webpage and see how we want to update it, how we want it to look different if we do. But really would like to have a council member on that, uh, on that committee that we're going to put together to begin looking at the webpage. That's the purpose in this legislation.
I think Carrie would be great for that.
I think so, too. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm glad y'all think so. Is this because I was not here at the last council meeting? You snooze, you lose. All right, while I was basking in the sun, y'all were making decisions on my behalf. Thank you very much.
Looking after you.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion that we designate Carrie as our council member to serve on the city webpage committee.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, me too.
Mr. Mayor and council, next item is award for request for proposal. We went out for an RFP related to the old Diamond Marine. Uh, the, uh, the previous leasing is no longer there. So we went out for RFPs to see who would be interested. Uh, we have a, um, a person, we have someone who's interested. And what this would simply do is, um, agree to, and this is the only one, I may, I may add, the only proposal we got. By approving this, you're approving this particular company with the, uh, with the issue still to be resolved of some, uh, discussions, some negotiation as it relates to the financial aspect of this. That will come, we anticipate, at the, um, at a later council meeting, but not at this particular council meeting. Chuck, what am I forgetting?
I think you've done it well, Mr. Chandler. Mayor and council had any questions? I think a very valid proposal. It will work well in Harvard. We recommend a technical section of proposal. We will negotiate any specifics in that topic.
I believe this is pretty much like the proposal you had a couple of years ago where you were going to put in some hotel rooms and slips and a chandlery and stuff. I think it's a great idea.
That actually is a, um, the main ob, objective, of course, is, was a more of a marina, kind of a combination of maybe if you want to mash together a Virginias and a Woody's.
I think it's a good idea.
But then in future, if we could obtain some more harbor frontage, yes, I'd love to do that, but there's not enough room in the proposed area that we're talking about right now, for sure.
I love it.
I think it's great. So would the proposal be, um, to, uh?
Address of Justin Chandler?
Well, yeah, but with additional financial to come?
To come later.
Okay.
Yes.
So we can make sure exactly how much money we're actually going to be making from start to finish.
That'll, we anticipate possibly the next council meeting, but not at this council meeting, but that's not set yet.
This is just to keep moving forward.
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, then I make, um, a motion that we, uh, consider, uh, a harbor lease at 520 Bigelow, known as Diamond Marine.
Formerly.
Formerly known as Diamond Marine, to Mr. Justin Chandler with the understanding that financial discussions are to come in the future.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council, next item is, um, a request for, asking if you would agree to a, simply a request for proposals for reimbursable, a key point, for expertise related to the FEMA public assistance, um, public assistance program. And the reason that is on there is as staff becomes involved with this day-to-day routine, staff is becoming very busy. On the other hand, there are still issues out there. We want to make sure we're not overlooking with FEMA. There are issues where we're going to have to start going out for RFPs on all these projects that we're working with FEMA on. That's a very timely process. Whoever we agree on board, if we do, if you agree, uh, they would, um, help us with that process also. So that's the purpose in this. I know it's something that's been tossed back and forth and discussed, um, for a while now, but the more we discuss it and the more we discuss it with FEMA, in fact, they said it may be a good idea with all this going on. That's what's before you, again, only to go out for RFP. That's all at this point.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, go out for, uh, RFPs for a, uh, PA, Public Assistant to work with the FEMA program proposals and RFPs and things that need or needed.
That is right. Sounds good.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to development services. Is a consider an act and approving, approving an agreement with LNV Engineering to complete design and preparation of a request for proposal for roads, Beasley Water and wastewater project.
Let me go ahead and get started and you can jump in. Fernando's not here tonight. He sends his apologies for not being here. Uh, this is simply for phase two of the bond project. You recall the bond project, moving forward with that, extending utilities to roads in Beasley. And it'll contain a construction of a lift station and to be located near Avenue A and roads with capacity for future expansion in the area of, uh, 1069. So Kat, what can you add to that? It's an opportunity for staff believes it's an opportunity for growth. And again, this is already funded through a previous bond issue.
Well, then I make a motion that we approve an agreement with LNV Engineering to complete design and preparation of a request for proposal for, uh, roads, Beasley Water, and wastewater project.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we go to consider an act on the insurance of a request for proposal for roof repairs at City Hall and Police Department.
You just stated it. That's the issue right there. Uh, we can see daylight in some of the roof and, uh, roof area and, and Police Department and City Hall. And we're simply asking to go out for an RFP for roof repairs for City Hall and the Police Department, all related to Harvey.
So they're not skylights?
That's what I was going to say.
We intended that to be the latest feature.
Oh, boy.
Well, Eric, you ought to like that cool breeze that comes in.
Well, I make a motion that we authorize the staff to go out for RFPs for roof repairs to City Hall and the Police Department building.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And again, we're working with FEMA closely on that, so we're following all their basing.
Consider an act on amending the city of Aransas Pass Code of Ordinance, Chapter 5, Building and Construction, Article 1, and General Section 5-2 amendments and modifications of building codes, amended requirements for contractors who register with the city of Aransas Pass Building Department.
Um, this amendment has a few different parts. The main thing is that a big flaw that we found with, uh, residents who've had a lot of the contractors that have come into this area is the lack of a requirement on our end for the liability insurance for any contractor. for the liability insurance for any contractor who registers with the city. And it's a recommendation from the Texas Department of Insurance. It's a common practice with a lot, with most municipalities, is just the added protection. It would just require that when they came in to register, contractors have to register every year in order to pull a permit, and it would just require that they have the liability insurance. We haven't set a price, a amount for the liability insurance as of yet. It's something that we're going back and looking at, something that is, again, recommended. But for right now, we're just wanting that requirement in. And the other things, as we were looking at going in for the text amendments for that requirement, the, there was a few updates that needed to be made. One for clarification, replacing license fee with contractor registration fee. And there's, as of September of last year, the state has added to those contractors who are exempt from paying a contractor registration fee, they've added electricians to that. And so, the other is just updating that list. Plumbers were also previously exempt, so just added electricians to our exempted list. And it also is codifying, the practice has been for us to have a rolling 12-month period for contractor registration. When we went back and reviewed the actual ordinance, there is a set date with a three-month grace period for prorating. The issue that other building departments have, whenever it is a one-time date, is that you get an influx of all the contractors at once. It made sense whenever it was all on paper, and it was harder for someone to check when someone's coming to pull a permit if they're still registered. The way it's set up now, we have email notifications, it takes less than a minute to pull it up on the computer, and it's no longer more efficient. And so, this would just codify the, what's become the practice.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm a builder myself, so I'm gonna abstain from the vote, but I believe that all those contractors that we have are already governed by an engineer that comes along with it. And I believe that it's gonna affect a lot of our citizens as far as redoing a window, redoing a door, or doing very minor repairs that requires a permit. Instead of it being just whatever the permit is and a little bit more from the handyman, now the handyman's gonna be required to be able to, have to have a liability insurance to be able to work with the citizen to have a better price versus you require a, every single contractor to be licensed, you don't have to be licensed, not even by the state or anybody, but to have, to require liability insurance. There's two sides to look at it. Either the citizen's gonna have to spend more money to do a small job versus a citizen not having to spend that much money to do a small job, 'cause either way, you still gotta get an engineer to be able to get everything certified for the windstorm. Now, I don't like it, but it's up to y'all which y'all wanna do.
And subcontractors?
I think that it's, there's two different sides to look at it, and it's more of an expense for the citizens here in Aransas Pass to be able to do, and I'll make a good example of a roofing repair. Okay, you're gonna go redo a roof, you already have to hire an engineer to be able to get the windstorm certificate, then you gotta get a certified, all it, all it pretty much does, it weeds out the small guy from the guy that can afford the liability insurance. This pretty much, that's all it's doing.
It's, a large portion has been responded to.
They can go ahead and buy liability insurance today, come show it to you, and tomorrow, they don't have to pay for it and cancel it, same difference.
Well, it gives the city a little bit of recourse. One of the things that's come up is that there's been, there's been a couple of contractors that are registered with the city who have done the scam thing, and it's, it's not...
And that's where the city's gotta be better at it, and pick and choose, you know, who can come register, but you, you know. And I understand liability's got a lot to do with it, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, unfortunately, municipality doesn't have a whole lot of power when it comes to, after a contractor's gone in and done the work and leaves, it ends up getting, becoming a civil matter. And so, it's, it's a more of a preemptive protection, just like the issues that have come up have been with the contractors who, when they, when it's brought to their attention that they're doing the work poorly, it's, or they're not doing it at all, they either, they leave. And the issue has been that if they don't have the liability insurance...
But if you have the engineer behind them, then the engineer oughta be, you know, 'cause he's putting a stamp out there to stamp that drawing or whatever it is to be able to create that job. That's, that's the reason why they came up with that TUIA stuff that way, 'cause back in the day, the city itself used to be the inspectors, and you did not have to have any of that TUIA or any engineers or anything to inspect the job. Then it became a liability to where the city, you know, it is what it is.
Oh, yeah, and the, for the roofing, for the WPI-1, you know, those are, we do do the roofing permits and they pull the...
The engineer takes liability for it.
Yes, yeah. And you're right, it is a choice. There are contractors who, they, that's, they're, they're small and they don't carry the liability insurance. It's, again, whenever it came up and we, I called up TDI and asked them about what we could do to help these people, at this point, if they've been scammed, it's a civil matter. But they recommended adding that liability insurance requirement, but it's certainly something that we could look at.
I have a question, you know, based on the mayor's comment. Do we know how many of these small contractors we have, you know, like I said, you know, like they just work around town here and they have...
The handyman.
The handyman kind, do we have a, kind of a list or a number that we...
We really don't, because whenever they register, we don't ask, we don't gather, like, the size of the company, you know, they have to, we'll have the address and we can, if they're a local one, then we can surmise based on the number of contractors that come in, 'cause the, and people can pull, if a contractor is registered, then he can have whoever's under him pull a contract, pull a permit under that contractor.
Only if it's allowed by the guy that, only be, only if it's allowed by the guy that registers, you don't allow whoever's underneath them to be able to pull a permit.
Yep, they have to submit whenever they register. If they intend to have any subcontractors pulling a permit under their, on their job, they have to give us a written consent, and that subcontractor has to give photo ID to make sure that they are approved in order to pull a permit under that contractor.
Do, how many scams are we aware of?
The ones that have come to us, I am thinking of about three. The ones that I have had, I've had people mention that haven't come in, that's just been hearsay. So, it's a...
They've come into my office also.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it's, the ones that have been hit, that have come to us, it's because they're been hitting the tens of thousands of dollars. And it's just, again, it's no guarantee that it wouldn't happen, it would just be a more protection for that person that if that contractor did have liability insurance and they were found to have, the plans they submitted is not matching the work that they did, then that would give that resident the ability to try to recoup some of that loss. And right now, it's, they still have the option to try to recoup it, they just, they have to hire an attorney, go to court, file a police report, and...
And that's why it's, it's a very good policy as, as a citizen that if you have a contractor that comes to you to wanna do one of your jobs, if you're asking for some money upfront to do a job, chances are, look elsewhere. Find a guy that can actually do the work upfront and to get paid for it, that would be a lot better for yourself versus when somebody comes and they'll ask you for 30%, 40%, tell them, "Go down the street and find somebody else." Because chances are, whether you have the liability insurance or not, you don't know if that liability insurance is actually good or not. So, the best practice, in my opinion, is if they're asking for your money upfront, they need to go down the street.
And one thing about that lib, the, one of the reasons for, if, if they did bring, have it for just the registration, canceled the next day, then when the person came in and we were, we pulled it up to look at that contractor, if it was no longer valid, then we could pull that contractor registration and not allow them to issue a permit. Right now, we don't have any, like, we, the contractors that we've had complaints about, we're not able to do very much at all because it's still within the legal allowance for them to come in and pull a permit. We can make recommendations, but we can't endorse contractors, is one of the issues. Like, we can, we may know who the trustworthy ones are, but it's a liability for the city for us to recommend or endorse anyone.
And that's the way they're endorsed. If you can do money, if you can do work without having to ask for money, then that's the endorsement on its own, 'cause they already done some work, so they're gonna expect to get paid, and that's how you move on forward. That's one of the best protections, whether you have liability insurance or not. The best protection is if they cannot do any kind of work upfront, then send them down the street.
Yeah, and that's what the information, especially whenever TDI came in and tried to help us with getting notices out and informing people, you know, we tried to push that information as much as possible as far as the things to look out for, for the scam contractors, and it just, it's still, it's still happening, and it's still going to, but that is a valid point, as far as, like, which, which do you choose?
So, the air-conditioned people are not, do not follow the same thing as the plumbers and the electricians?
Right.
'Cause they're all, they're also licensed by the state.
They are, and they, the only difference is they are required to pay the $100 annual fee. Plumbers and electricians are exempt by the state. So, general contractors and anyone, any other type of state licensing.
All in favor of the council?
I'm just kinda concerned, you know, as far as what it's going to do to our, the residents, the fees is gonna go up, and most of them are just barely having the funds available to pay for their repairs, 'cause, you know, we all know, you know, FEMA's not paying a whole lot when it comes to claims and things, or if they receive any money from FEMA on that. Is there any way we can, I, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the council, is just kinda table this and just do some more research as what we can do to protect our, you know, what else we can do to protect our residents and not make the fee, you know, the cost go higher for our residents. I don't know what's out there, but I just would like to see what we can uncover a little bit more for, a little bit more research on that. That's what would be my proposal, is just, just table the item to our next city council meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
You got here second?
That was my question. You wanna call that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we go to consider an act of a request for Mary Ann Hyman for a variance on flood plain regulations.
Get a different stack of papers. Okay, so, the way that the flood insurance program works, through the National Flood Insurance Program, if you are in a special flood hazard zone and you are damaged more than 50%, then you are required, in order to be permitted to rebuild or repair, to come up to code as far as flood plain regulations set by the city and by the NFIP. And so, Ms. Hyman's property is on the causeway, when you first go on the Harbor Island to the left. It was, the slab is there, but it was completely taken off the slab by the storm. And so, it's, especially since FEMA looks at the value of the structure for determining substantial damage, it is a 100% loss. So, it's a, FEMA and NFIP consider it substantially damaged. So, this, what this, the reason this request's coming to you, where the property sits, it would require elevation of five feet in order to be, meet our freeboard requirements. FEMA does allow for what they call dry floodproofing for commercial businesses. FEMA will only certify up to three feet of floodproofing, and, which is something I only recently found out. I did tell Ms. Hyman incorrectly when she first came to speak with me, our flood ordinance says that you can, for commercial, you can dry floodproof or elevate. And the reason I attached the FEMA Technical Bulletin Three dash nine-three is it goes into more requirements for what they look at for dry floodproofing. And so, in order to do the dry floodproofing, so this variance request is to do dry floodproofing beyond the three feet, to do the additional footage that would meet that freeboard requirement of one foot above the base flood elevation level. The, our ordinance, the NFIP, does allow for the council to grant a variance. It is something to consider with a lot of thought, simply because we are going to be audited, I'm sure everyone's tired of me saying that. The main thing they look at are variation requests. And so, it, the staff recommendation is to go with federal policy. They do, FEMA does look at engineering practices as far as if, if you wanted to supersede the regulations they have in place. And so, if there was a variance granted, then staff would request that the requirement be to have engineered plans showing that the, that dry floodproofing would not increase the hazard. The reasoning behind it is, the higher up you floodproof, the more pressure goes against the building. And so, the, what it would require is an engineer to sign off and accept the liability, saying that it is strapped firmly enough to the slab in order for it to still, to not constitute a hazard. The, the type of building that this is, the type of business that it is, it doesn't require the sheet rock and carpeting that would be something to, a lot of normal businesses would, the intention would be to be, where it could go, the water could come in and come out. Again, it's, it's a, the, the variance provision in our ordinance, if, allows it, if it constitutes a hardship against the applicant, it definitely constitutes a hardship. However, one thing to consider is, we, as a city, by granting the variance, it could be considered, if FEMA came in and audited and they said that it was not a just variance, that they didn't consider it to be a valid reasoning behind it, then it could affect our NFIP participation as far as a community rating. And so, that's just something to, again, it's just something to have a lot of thought to go, go behind it.
What is the actual height that the building has to come up to from where it is right now?
From, it would have to be, elevation certificate. And the Simon did get an elevation certificate.
You only have to come up a foot to come up, to come up to, to where we don't have to do a variance.
Well, it's, technically, it is a foot above the base flood elevation level, and they used to consider it, like, what the base flood elevation level is, is what FEMA projects the 100-year flood event to be, and that is set off of what used to be considered sea level, it's easiest just to think of it as that, but it's the general, where they measure up as far as on the firms, like, when they say it is 100 feet above the datum, there, it's picturing it like sea level, it's 100 feet above. So, where the property is right now, where the top of the slab is, is at about a little bit over four feet above the sea level. The flood is mapped to where the base flood elevation level, the BFE, is projected at being, sorry. Did a nice little chart, and I should use it, is at eight feet. And so, the, our ordinance requires the freeboard, which is the additional footage above the base flood elevation. Aransas Pass is one foot. So, since the base flood elevation at that place is eight feet, and the freeboard is additional feet, then it has to be elevated to nine feet. The concrete slab is currently at four feet. And so, it is an additional...
Additional five feet.
Five feet, yeah. It's a little under five feet, and so, it's at 4.95.
So, it's actually one foot above whatever they're recommending that you actually got.
Yeah, that, so, the five feet is what it would have to be at for compliance. The issue is, if, they could, like I said, they can dry floodproof only up to three feet. And so, it's, the, the request is to dry floodproof for that additional 1.95 feet or almost two feet. And that's where you'd have to have the engineering plans to verify. I don't know if y'all had time to look at the FEMA Technical Bulletin, it's a fast, you know, riveting reading, but... They, it goes in a bit more detail about talking what they look at, as far as why they consider it a hazard to go above the three feet, and what they would look at as far as the engineer certifications and why, why they considered that. So, if, again, if a variance was...
I got one question.
Uh-huh.
I got one question. After, after all this, all these requirements that we have is for the simple fact of you being able to buy floods, flood insurance, or
Well, it would, it's, at this point
Like, in other words, if you were to build something, and you really don't need to buy flood insurance, does it matter into the situation at all?
It does, just because we're required, the city's required to, before we permit anything. So if it was already there, if it wasn't damaged, we couldn't go in and just require that they come up to code. But because they're substantially damaged, if they want to get permitted at all, they have to come up to code. They have to submit plans that show they're meeting the floodplain regulation requirements before we can issue a permit. If it's not in compliance, then, and that does affect every person's individual insurance. If this was found to not be in compliance, like, say we just permitted it and didn't follow through, when we get audited, when the FEMA comes in and looks at these, it would affect our entire community rating. And so it could potentially cause insurance rates to go up if we didn't look at the substantial damage before we permitted.
As far as we, if we don't keep the claims down?
And Ms. Hyman is here. If there's any questions that I can't answer that you would like to ask her.
Kat, earlier you said that they require, if it did flood in that area?
Do you want to come up to the podium, please?
Yeah, that way we can
If it did flood in that area, that the water would have to be able to come back out. And the way the building is, is to be designed, is the entire back of the building will be up one inch. So it doesn't come down. That's, and at that point, I didn't even know anything about the flooding, but that was so that we could, you know, keep it clean and wash the concrete off and everything else. We also have an opening that is 12 by 10. We have three windows on the backside that are 3 by 6. We have a double door that is 36, twice, so you're looking at, what, 72 inches in the front? You've got two more, 3 by 6 windows in the front of the building. So as, as far as flooding, even through this storm that we had, as devastating as it did everybody, I had bricks that you put 4 by 4s in, that I had out there at the little porch. So it was portable, because I figured if a hurricane comes, I could fold it up and leave with it, right? Well, our weatherman didn't give me enough time to do that. But when I got back, there was no grass, there was no water, and all my bricks are still standing in a row. Everything else was gone. There, there wasn't even a flood where I was. That was all wind that did that. When my insurance, when Twia showed up, she says, there's no doubt about it, there was no flood here. I mean, it was dry, everything was. And you could see, there was no grass washed up anywhere, there was nothing. But because they transpose the address, which I have nothing but problems with that address out there, they transpose the address, Twia will not pay the insurance. Okay, so everything I have to work on here to get this building back is right here. The, the five foot, I mean, that's not a problem. We can do that. We can give it, that should be engineered through my engineer, through my guy doing it, that that building should allow as much water that comes in, run right back out, all those openings. I mean, we got to have openings for air so that we survive in there, because we don't have heat. There is no sheet rock. There is, I mean, it's a, it's a bait shop, you know? And to bring it up five foot, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, means that I have to get them to come in there, dig all that up, okay? Put four foot in the ground concrete, and five foot above ground. And that is just not economical. How would I pay that back with a bait shop? You know, concrete work is not cheap, you know? And, and the engineering on this, it's a good building, it's a Mueller building. They'll put, and of course, I don't want electricity down low. I, you know, I mean, that would be stupid, right? Was floors and electricate yourself. So five foot, I'd have a problem with that. You know, in some places, it'll probably even be higher than that. You'd said something that the waters couldn't intermingle, your fresh water, your salt water, your black water, and all that.
Part of what the dry floodproofing entails is making sure that any plumbing is sealed to where there couldn't be any inundation and cross-contamination in the event of a flood.
And that's not a problem either, because everything would go one place up and then over the top, because you want to be able, one, to keep the floors clean, you know, and do that.
But you're not tied into the city sewer, city water, or anything like that?
I don't get anything. No, I get quarter ends of this water. I don't have anything for the city. That building was there way before the city ever annexed it. And I mean, we can't even get Pizza Hut to deliver pizza. We get no cable. Cable one won't come out there to us. Nothing will go past Bay Harbor. That's it. We can't even get sprayed for mosquitoes up there. And I, really, I ask you, please, consider this. This is our livelihood. We, we bring in, we service a lot of tourists. We do lots of fishing trips out of there. This is Mike Nigga. I'm sure some of y'all know him. Captain Mike Nigga is who I'm buying this from. He would, he would have been here with me today, except the lucky guy's on a boat on his way to Mexico right now on a cruise. So, and he would have been here last week, but everything got changed, so. I mean, doing it the other way, how would you get people in the building? You know, you're, you're five foot above. How do you build your docks? You know, someone, that would be more than a five-foot fall, because you've got to be so high off the water, too. I mean
It's just a lot greater expense.
I, I, you know, I've sat and I've studied it, and I've looked at it, and I've scratched my head, and it even made me start smoking again. If I got to do this, how do I make that work? You, you have to have handicapped accessible. And I do have a lot of people that come in wheelchairs. They love to fish on that dock out there. And, but they also have to come in to use the bathroom. So how would you buff it up? How would you zigzag that ramp? Because I only have so much space out here to the front that actually belongs to that property, and then it becomes county property, and then it's state property. So, I mean, the county lets us use it, the state lets us use it, because we mow it, we take care of it, you know? But, I mean, the, the five foot is just, I mean, I I can't figure it out. And I've talked to several people. I said, give me an idea, guys, if I have to do this. How am I going to do it?
So the situation we have right now, I believe, is a matter of expense and how to put it back together or not? Pretty much, and as far as
And the pier and beam was
Pier and beam, you're looking at, you're looking at tanks that have anywhere from 2, 2,000 gallons, 3,000 gallons of water in them. And, and we thought about that, too, okay? Okay, this, and, and this is how desperate the thought was. Okay, we'll just leave the tanks on the bottom, right? Put the building up five foot on pier and beam or whatever. And then, you know, just like, make a ramp up, and, and the people in wheelchairs and stuff can still get inside the store, from in the store. And then I went, okay, that'll work if I have employees that are 4 foot 11, you know, because it's either that or put it up another eight, nine foot, you know? So that, that idea, we were happy with that idea until I thought about it, and I went, wait a minute, that's five foot off the ground. I'm way too old, I'm way too fat to be running over and not knowing where I'm going to get, to get bait out of the tank, you know?
So Kat, you said that if an engineer signs off on the plan, that we're protected, the city?
Well, it's the best bet for protection. If there was a variance to be granted, that would be staff recommendation to require the engineer plans. Because if you look in the, if you look in the ordinance, what the council can consider, what, as far as what constitutes a variance. Good and sufficient cause, exceptional hardship to the applicant. The last one is the one where the city, where it, where I would want to have an engineer. Because the, the last one is, can we guarantee that it will not cause a hazard? You know, we can look at it and sufficiently say it's not going to cause flooding issues because of its location. There is no way for staff to guarantee that by not following the federal policy that we could, that it wouldn't be a hazard. That's where, if, if a variance was to be granted, we would ask that it would be done with a engineer, requiring the engineer plans, showing that it's, you know, putting that on there.
And she has agreed to that.
And you think, you can get someone to do that?
She has agreed to that.
Oh, yeah.
Because if she could get somebody to sign off on it?
Yeah.
I would be comfortable with that.
I would, too.
So we will have to, do you have that with you, or?
No, I mean, because, I mean somebody would say, yes, Mary Ann, you can do that, just, you know? Yes, I would have, my contractor would have had that done already, but he's just, he's waiting on me. I mean
Sure.
You know, our building's ordered. It's all ordered for the windproof stuff. And it's all in how you put it down, is the extra stuff that he orders, and that's separate from, I don't know how they make these buildings, but somehow he got me pushed ahead. And instead of a three-month wait, I only have a month wait, so.
So can we table this? I make a motion to table and have her
Yeah, because
Come back again with the engineer?
Let me suggest you table it, pending, pending submission of engineers' certification or whatever.
How about we don't table it, guys, and just say, I can't, just, she will just tell me, no, I can't do this unless I bring in, we can't get the permit to do it.
There's no difference.
Well, there is, maybe I got to come back. I got to come back with no with no guarantee of, of that being done. I'm paying this guy to do all this.
That depends on your engineer?
I think we're all comfortable with the fact, if you bring back an engineering drawing, that's what we're asking you to do.
Okay.
Had to be, you know, staffed and signed by the engineer.
I mean, we understand your hardship. We definitely understand your hardship. We understand the, the commitment that you have in, to this community and what you do for this community. And we do need your business back. But it needs to be done the right way. And if we table it and you bring back that engineering drawing, I know I personally would agree to that.
Or do we, or do we have to table it, like, so you have to come back with that? Can we just go ahead and approve it with the condition that she brings an engineering plan sealed?
Well, you'd have to put it back on the engine one way or the other.
Oh, okay, had to go back on way or the other?
For the simple fact that we need an engineer that says it's okay for you to proceed and do what you're doing.
So can you have it by next
With the waterproofing, like we talked about?
Yes.
With, with the specs.
Yeah, they, it would have to
You can give me that, right?
Well, it would have to, well, it'll, it'll be the engineer's responsibility, because I'm not an engineer. And so the best I can do is say what the policy says. They would have, the big thing is, they would have to be able to show that by dry floodproofing more than three feet, that it would not increase the hazard as far as like the potential water
Cover the flows of, flows of issue, right?
Yeah. The, the issue becomes, the higher up the dry floodproofing goes, the more space it creates for the water to push against, the harder it pushes, and the more likely it's get swept off. And so it would, the engineer would have to show, if it has the openings on the bottom that's putting it through, then you very well might have. I might have claimed them all. Yep, I didn't.
Okay, can we just make a motion to table it and put it to the, Mary Ann, can you get it by our next city council meeting? The first one in February?
What day is it in February?
The first Monday, whatever that
Fifth.
The fifth?
The fifth.
Jan?
February the fifth?
February.
February fifth, yeah, that's right.
About two weeks, two weeks.
It's about two weeks, more or less.
Yeah, two weeks, two weeks from today.
Okay, so I make a motion that we table until the next city council meeting.
A second.
You're supposed to say that.
We've already tabled, uh, motion?
Yes, make a motion. I was thinking of something else, I'm sorry. Make a, favor
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we go to Sandra. Where's she at?
Good evening. We're going to do the financial report for the month of December. We have you want to just, do you want to do the graphs?
Sure.
We did some graphs this time around. Okay, the first one is your expenditure. Basically, that's your expenditures, your budgeted versus actual, and you'll see that all departments are below, you'll see on the screen, all departments are below what we had budgeted. Then if you want to look at the revenues, the revenues, budgeted, expenditure, budgeted revenues versus actual, most of them are above. There's a minor exceptions there. We did, our, the water department not, didn't collect as much as we had anticipated. Obviously, the civic center, we are closed for repairs, and the aquatic center still hasn't, hasn't opened for the season. But overall, it, it looks good. Our, overall, our expenditures are down. Our revenues may be down in some departments. But our overall, our expenditures are down significantly. That makes up for whatever deficit in the revenue that hasn't been coming in. Our sales tax is slowly climbing back up, and we're very happy about that. So we hopefully anticipate that that growth in our sales tax base continues as the months progress. And I do apologize about the graphs that were late addition this afternoon, but they will be part of the monthly report, your packages, from now on. Okay? Do you have any questions?
Nice job, Sandra.
Thank you. I'm going to stay up here because I have another one.
We're getting better, right?
Excuse me?
We're getting better, right?
We are. Okay, um, the next item that I have is the investment report. Is the first quarter of the fiscal year 2017, 2018 investment report. We have three banks that we're currently doing business with. 29% of our money is at Prosperity Bank for the quarter. 29% of our money was at Taxpul for the quarter, and 42% of our money was at Texas Class. That's pretty much our bond, our bond money, money that we've already gotten from our bonds that is pending, like you all approved something today, to, so that we can go ahead and start using it. Overall, we had $9.6 million for investment. We earned $22,053 of interest for the quarter, giving us a return on our investment of .91%. Unfortunately, our benchmark, which is the three-month T-bill, the benchmark was at 1.23%. We were not able to hit that benchmark. We, I am projecting the next quarter we will. I have moved the money, I moved the majority of the money of the drug fund mid-November to Taxpul. So I'm hoping that that will increase our, our interest. Obviously, that's not our interest, that's Chief Blanchard's interest. I have to clarify that. But, but it'll hopefully get us towards the benchmark that we want. And that's, we're using the three-month T-bill as our benchmark, and that fluctuates depending on the market. Do you all have the collateral? The bank, the bank has provided, Prosperity Bank has provided sufficient collateral. Their pledged collateral is at $4.4 million, and we only had $1.3 million in the bank. So we were sufficiently, we had sufficient collateral in case anything happened. So, any questions? Okay, those are my presentations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, mayor and council, I guess I'm up. So because of the graphs, I changed the report, so you have graphs, too. And this is a report that's a work in progress. There are some, a few minor errors, plus or minus a couple of numbers there, but I'm working with our RMS vendor to get those updated. but I'm working with our RMS vendor to get those updated for you. But let me start with the department news, because I have some staff here today, and I'll get them to step up. I got Troy Poe, Alvin Luker, and Dee Simpson. Dee is a dispatcher that is new hire for us here at the police department. We're blessed to have her, she does have prior experience, which is a huge plus, because that's the hardest division to keep employees in, it's a tough job. Alvin comes to us from Colorado, he gave up smoking pot and wanted to- No, I'm kidding. That's a joke I like to make, I like to poke fun.
Oh, boy.
Oh, God.
He actually came down to South Texas to help. He, he came down post Hurricane Harvey to help family, my understanding, in the Rockport area. And he stayed and he brought his wife, she's sitting there, but he brought his wife as well.
She's very red at this point.
She's hiding.
Yeah, I, I poke that, I, I bring that up a lot when I talk to Alvin, because he, he comes from the great state of Colorado. He was a supervising officer over in Colorado. And I'm sure he's got a wealth of experience and knowledge that will also benefit here in our community. Now, I did ask him to compare the clientele that we deal with in both communities. Says very similar to the community he came from, but he's doing very, very well. He should be off his introductory training very soon and be on his own. Troy Poe comes to us from North Texas, trying to get down south to fish a little bit more often. He actually just bought a brand-new house around the area and he moved down here with his better half as well. So I just wanted to introduce him to you, this is the council, and welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to Rancho.
Continuing on with the updates, so I introduce the new staff to you. We did have no big, big highlights. This report actually went out online last week, so you can see it on our website in anticipation for that council meeting that got canceled because of the weather. Of course, CID, some of the highlights there is, one, they got to provide security for the First and Second Lady of the United States when they came to visit the schools. And the other highlight is dealing with John Morgan and all his disruption he's created. Patrol highlights, nothing major to report. So this is what I'm highlighting here, if you look at that graph, accidents, and this is on a three-month basis. So when you're looking at December, we're also going back two months, so you can kind of see a comparison side by side there. I'm looking at accidents, I'm looking at proactivity, which includes extra patrols, agency assist, public assist, and traffic stops. And down on the bottom, assaults, burglaries, commercial and residential, criminal mischief, death investigations, fraud, theft reports, and theft of a motor vehicle. Again, this report is online, if you want to look at it at the granular level and have some fun reading, you can do that. I will tell you, coming in February, I'm gonna do an annual report to the council on public safety stats for the whole year of 2017. It takes a little bit longer to do that report, it's not gonna be as pretty, but it's gonna give you a lot of insight into the community and where we're going. And it looks like, at this point, that we're on a three-year low as far as property crimes. Last year, I think, or the year before, we went down when the communities around us went up, and that's burglaries, thefts and stuff. So I'm very happy to see that preliminary number. The other thing is, is we had no murders last year, which was awesome. And I hope it can stay that way. That's all I have for you as far as the stats for December. Again, they're online, if you'd like to take a look in a more detailed fashion. The next item that I have for you, Council, and this is an annual presentation, is the racial profiling report, basically based on traffic stops where a citation is issued. Next year, you're gonna have a more detailed report. This is, there's a lot of page to this. This also is online, if anybody wants to read it in detail, they can go on there and read it in detail. We got a clean bill of health, there's no anomalies that were, that surfaced. We had no complaints of racial profiling last year. And we're meeting all the criteria as far as policy and state law. Next year, which is actually this year, but next year you'll see a report that includes the Sandra Bland Act. And Sandra Bland, if you remember, was a, a black female from around the Houston area that was arrested on a warrant and died in jail from committing suicide. And basically, I would say that 60 to 70% of that act instructs law enforcement, basically, and jails, to find ulterior ways of dealing with people that are suffering from mental health crisis. We're already doing that, we've been doing that ever since I've been here. We've been taking that approach. We cater to mental health first and then we resolve the crimes second to that. That's all that law is doing. The other thing is, is it's enhancing reporting requirements. So now, I'm gonna have to report to council and the state every year on every single traffic stop. So now, if you get pulled over, in order for us to maintain that requirement, we have to issue a written warning. So if you get stopped, you'll get either a written warning or a written citation. But it, it has to be in writing, so that way I can account for those stats. The other thing that it requires is that we do audits on our data, where I actually have to pull data, I have to audit it. And if there's any mistakes and they're over a certain small margin of error, it comes back on the police chief. So as you can imagine, I have hired Del Carmen to make sure that our data is all where it needs to be. He has been auditing our data already and everything is moving smoothly. He will be doing four audits throughout this next year, quarterly audits, to make sure that there's no discrepancies with that data. This is the report, it is online as well already under our racial profiling page and it's also been filed online with the State of Texas T-Cole Commission.
So now we go to citizen comments? Where you have-
Mr. Mayor and Council, if the council is acceptable to this, we'd like to have a work session on February 12th, following the February 5th regular meeting, the next, following Monday. Would like to look at four different topics, for discussion only, no action. And that is credit card fee, the camping permit in the Flatlands area, the comprehensive plan, want to update you on where we are with the comprehensive plan, and then Harrison Boulevard. Want to talk about Harrison Boulevard, the possible extension of the work that's been done there. So those are the four items, if you're open to it, for a work session on February 12th.
I am.
Is there a possibility, that's the regularly, I know the planning zoning hasn't been meeting regularly since the hurricane, that's the Monday, the 12th is where the planning zoning is normally, you get it by, by the 15th? But if we need to accommodate, we can, you know, maybe we need to adjust that.
We can, if the council's open to it, we can choose another date other than Monday for that, that week.
I'm good for Tuesday, the 13th.
Okay, well, look, the 13th?
Was that Friday?
It's not Friday.
We'll look at the 13th then, we'll plan on 13th and we will notify you accordingly. Okay? That's all staff has to say.
Unless you want to buy dinner for everybody on the 14th with our loved ones. Just saying.
You drive a hard car.
He'll give you a discount at Red Fish Willie's.
That's right.
Plus tax. We go to, the citizen comments are intended for the matter that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policies, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Okay, so then I guess we go into executive session. And this one I heard was gonna take a while.
Gonna bring snacks?
You guys can go have dinner and come on back?
Bring a beer.